There we go.
I want to open this meeting up. It is 10:03. I want to call this meeting to order. I do want to, as I talked to Mike earlier, I have contractors coming over today. They're supposed to be here between 8:00 and 9:30. And obviously, they're not here. So I may have to take a five or 10 minute break. When they do show up, I got to talk to them a little bit, and I'll be back. So just keep that in mind. And Mike will take over the meeting for me. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And please unmute yourself. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, limitless, and justice. Well, thanks. I would like to thank everybody for being here. I don't believe Nancy Gula is on the...
Nancy's coming. She just called. She had another meeting, but she is going to sign in right away.
Okay, thank you. So Nancy has asked, and I want to give her full credit for this, but she has suggested since we weren't able to get together for a Christmas brunch that we have Christmas in July for the town employees. And I think it's a great idea. The Select Board or the Board of Selectmen is in agreement with this. So I wanted to run it by everybody. And if there's any date in July, that would be better for you and your employees to come to the, it'd be at Old Town Hall as we've had in the past. It'll have to be for some departments' shifts. But we would like to pick a date today. And we would invite all the employees. So anybody have any ideas on this as to what would be a good date for everybody? It would be like from 11:30 to 1:30, something like that. People would be, you know, the Board of Selectmen members would be participating as well as a town administrator and Mrs. Gula. So my contractors are here. This is just... On time. So Mike, if you could, if you want to go through the other stuff and we can go back to this brunch, Christmas brunch?
Yeah, that sounds great, Chairman Chico.
Okay, so I'm going to stay in, but I'm going to go off video. And I'll be back in a few minutes, hopefully.
So it sounds good. Well, hello everyone, good morning. So admittedly, I'm not as fun or exciting as Christmas in July. But well, do actually the last Board of Selectmen meeting, which was last week, the Board of Selectmen approved, oh, actually wrong one, sorry. The Board of Selectmen, hold on a second. Technical difficulties over here. I just had to share my screen. I apologize. All right. So if everyone can see that, so the Board of Selectmen with the, with the state lifting of the COVID-19 restrictions that were effective last weekend and with the governor actually announcing the lifting of the state of emergency on the 15th. The Board of Selectmen actually did approve recommendations from the reopening task force that we sent out actually yesterday morning. But I just want to just actually quickly go through them to make sure everyone is on the same page about exactly how we're moving forward as a town. Like, and we are moving forward in a town in a way that still like remains consistent with all the state protocols as well. Number one, like we're keeping all the plexiglass barriers up for the foreseeable future. All the capacity restrictions that we have at Old Town Hall, oh, in Town Hall, oh, and all of our other public buildings here in town, those are being lifted. We are having an ongoing discussion with the Council on Aging and with the Council on Aging Board about the reopening. So all the Council on Aging, oh, and the Council on Aging actually moving back to the Housing Authority, so in primetime reopening sometime during the summer. Those conversations are ongoing, but we are having those as well. Like, for the foreseeable future, the library will continue to offer a curb side pickup. Like, we also have additional, can we also have additional efforts relating to the library that are ongoing as well, looking at the spacing needs and the options we have for reopening the library, hopefully by Labor Day as well. So that work is ongoing together with Jocelyn, with the Board of Trustees at the library, so and with, so with the Municipal Building Study Committee and the Board of Selectmen as well. So that work's ongoing too. At this point, we aren't requiring masks in any town and building, but non-vaccinated employees are required to wear masks in line with CDC guidance. Just actually going down the list, like we're no longer, so like actually doing the employee screening sheets in our departments. Oh, you know, I mean, as always, like we are asking, oh, like any employees and residents really to continue self-monitoring for any symptoms. Like, we are no longer also doing, oh, like any type of like contract, oh, any contact tracing inventory for visitors to use the Town Hall, like Old Town Hall, like, oh, like of any town building as well. So like, and we're like encouraging, asking all employees, residents, and visitors, oh, like visitors to continue the healthy practices in terms, oh, you know, like of sanitizing, just, you know, keeping everything, oh, like individual employee spaces are actually clean. So like, you'll also remember at the beginning of the pandemic, we ramped up our cleaning protocols. They're being relaxed a little bit, but we still think it's extremely important to continue them as a priority. So the thing that was actually taking place at Town Hall and Old Town Hall, that had been taking place four times a week, that is now being, so it actually moved to two times a week. We're continuing the cleaning at the Highway Department. Oh, and we're continuing the cleaning at the library as well. I think I covered all that. We, so as I mentioned earlier, the capacity limits are increasing to 100% of our capacity. We will have a seating template for, so like for Old Town Hall and the lower conference room here at, so at Town Hall, like and things like are being scheduled as planned with no limits for the town meeting. That is scheduled for this coming Monday, the 7th. Like, a lot of effort is actually going into actually determining how public meetings will continue beyond June 15th. I can, so like, and it's evolving by the day because the governor, when, oh, yeah, last week, when the governor lifted the state of emergency, he also lifted the state of emergency for remote meeting participation. So there's a lot of great area about how cities and towns really need to proceed beyond June 15th. So like, and as of right now, we, like, in accordance with the law, like, we're requiring that public meetings and hearings be held in person unless, oh, like actually like a board or committee has adopted a remote participation policy. Oh, and at the same time, we do expect as we get closer to the 15th, so of June, actually legislation that the governor also filed will be extended to, so to the 1st of September to give cities and towns and us really more time to figure out exactly what this looks like. Oh, like with Zoom here, there's a lot of discussion in anticipation that, oh, like I think we all expect in some way, shape, or form for like Zoom, oh, you know, oh, you know, to have Zoom continue. But I think we all need to have, oh, I think a better understanding from the state of exactly what that actually looks like at the local level. So that work is ongoing. But then when we do, when that, so when we do have a better understanding about that, we'll make sure to work with everyone to really do training and tutorials about how that looks. Then finally, the end of the FF-CRA time has actually been lifted with the governor's order. So that will end in, like, on June 15th as well. So, but we're going to continue on with this, oh, like actually for the foreseeable future, like operating under a state of emergency like all of our neighbors as well. So does anyone have any questions on any of that information? I tried to fly through it just really to do a recap, but anyone have any questions on that before I move on?
I just had a question. I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm just curious. Do you think that might possibly be a hybrid model until they get everything firmed up? Where we use both Zoom and in-person?
So I do expect that that could potentially happen. But awesome, what I'm doing is, oh, like actually heading back to the, heading back to the legislation that the governor filed, we're not going to know whether that is going to pass closer to the 15th. So like, right now, we have to plan for like really like in-person meetings until we hear otherwise after the 15th.
Okay.
Hopefully after that, we'll have more clarity about how we can really do a better job planning with everyone, like over the summer and up to the 1st of September. But I think definitely more to come on that, Mr. Borkwin and everybody.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Did, did I understand you correctly when you said that each board should adopt a remote participation policy in the time being?
Oh, you know, oh, so like every board, like actually prior to COVID had the ability to do that. Like, if they already haven't done that, they might want to consider that. But we can actually get more information out on that as well, Jocelyn. That's a really good question that we're diving into actually as we speak because, oh, actually, all this is evolving on like a day by day now. Yeah, like, and the good news is though that we won't have to have all this in place. Any meetings beyond the 15th, but I also understand that some boards have monthly meetings and they would need to plan now.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So...
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
I do have one question that came up with Mr. Reins. And actually, I'm going to join it in. He had a question regarding the mask requirement for the town meeting. Is it going to be required for everyone to wear a mask? Or are they going to do it under the CDC guidelines? And would that also fall under the requirements for when we have a meeting in person? What is going to be the town, the employees' requirement on, I guess, I don't know. What's, what's the word I'm looking for? The, um...
Protocol?
Assurance or? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I know the CDC is requiring if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear the mask.
Yep.
If you're not vaccinated to wear, wait a minute, to wear the mask. If you're not vaccinated, to wear the mask. If you are vaccinated, you don't have to.
Yes.
Is it burden going to be on us to make sure that they're vaccinated, to confirm that? And what's going to be the requirement at the town meeting? Are people going to be required to wear a mask regardless? Or are we going to resume the CDC require, requirement? That makes sense.
Yes, like in my understanding...
Lisa, can you turn that? I can't, oh.
Yeah, like in my understanding, I mean, like in following the language that we put out is that we're requiring masks like for non-vaccinated employees and residents. But I mean, we're really, like, oh, actually, like in line with CDC guidance, we're really relying, oh, you know, on the honest system really. I mean, we have no way as a town or town employees really to police that either.
Right.
So, yeah, like we're the outlining what the requirements are and that they're in line with the CDC. Oh, like, oh, yeah, like actually at the CDC, but we have no way to enforce what police said as a town. So we're asking everyone to be responsible.
Okay.
Yeah, I would hope, if I could answer that, I would hope that those that are not vaccinated take this seriously and wear a mask. And like Mike just said, we can't monitor that. But I would just hope that they be honest. I don't take offense when somebody wears a mask. I don't, that's their choice. You know, we've been to the supermarket, my wife and I, we wear a mask. We're fully vaccinated, but we, because of the crowd and so many people, we wear a mask. People want to go to the annual town meeting and wear a mask even if they haven't vaccinated. That's okay too. But those that are vaccinated do not have to wear a mask. And I, I can't stress that enough. You can if you feel more comfortable. There may be a lot of people at the meeting, but we're not requiring it. But those that are not vaccinated, we're requiring that they wear a mask. So that was a good question.
Thank you.
So does anyone have any questions on the PowerPoint itself? And then I can move on if none. But I mean, these are really important issues and I understand that they were changed. So I want to make sure that everyone is on, actually, that everyone has an understanding of, oh, exactly where we're going and how we're hoping to get there. So, okay. So, so just moving on, you'll see that in the last slide, I didn't mention, well, we did mention the end of the FF-CRA time. So, but actually, lo and behold, oh, like at the end of the last week, the state actually adopted a new law, which, hold on a second, which, which would actually mandate additional FF-CRA, so which would mandate additional, which would mandate like additional FF-CRA light time that would go from May 28th to, I believe, September 30th of this year. Oh, like, and essentially, it's like a state-sponsored, it's a state, oh, so it's a state-sponsored FF-CRA program that for employees who work, so up to 40 hours a week, they would get up to 40 hours of emergency paid sick time. Oh, actually, like in addition to FF-CRA time from now to the end of September. Oh, like, and then as you will know, oh, you know, oh, like any eligibility for employees who work less than 40 hours per week will be tied to an average of the numbers worked. We literally just found out about this yesterday. So like, we will get information and guidance out to everybody about how we proceed with this program between now, oh, and the end of September. But I just wanted to make everyone aware of this and let you know that we're on it. Oh, like, and hopefully by the end of the day, we will send information out to departments just like so everybody remains on the same page about this. But we just literally found out about this. Does anyone have any questions about this aspect of it?
So, Mike, that's not something that the Board of Selectmen would vote on. This is law and this is, so it's not like in the past where we had to approve or disapprove it.
Yes, like as far as I know at this point, one of the things that you'll see in the second paragraph was that the MMA was asking for an exemption for local governments. And the governor initially vetoed the bill because it didn't actually include the exemption for local government. But I believe that this would in fact, oh, actually, now to apply, oh, you know, to local governments as employees. So I believe it's across the board, but that question kind of is exactly what we want to go through.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike.
Does anyone have any, oh, any additional questions about that aspect?
I don't.
So with that, I have talked a lot. So we can, so we can move on if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, to now hear a report from department heads?
Sure. But first, I want to go back to the, I'm not sure...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Christmas in July. I see that Mrs. Gula is with us. And as I noted earlier, this was her idea. I think it's a great idea. We weren't able to get together this past, around the holidays for a brunch. And she has suggested that we do get together in July. I think it's a great idea, the Board of Selectmen. I'm in agreement with that as well as our town administrator. And it's just a matter of picking a date and a time. I'm not sure if Mrs. Gula wants to add to that. I do want to give her full credit for this. I did not even think of this at all. But she on her own brought it to our attention and I just think it's a great idea and I'm glad that she thought of it. So, Mrs. Gula, would you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want everybody to know that the whole purpose of doing this is to, for lack of a better term, de-stress. Everybody get together. You know how at the holidays, people's spirits pick up? They look forward to family time and all that, which hasn't happened, at least not the last Christmas and pretty much all of the holidays that we celebrate during the year. So anyhow, that's what got me thinking about it. And I'm glad the Board of Selectmen and the TA are on board. So those of you that have attended in the past, great food, good time. You can even wear ugly Christmas sweaters if you want. So we just need to come up with a date and get the word out and see how many people will sign up so we'll know what to order.
Does anybody have a preference for a date that will be in July?
I gotta grab a calendar.
Yeah, I, I would assume that it would not be a Monday. Maybe a Wednesday or a Thursday is a possibility. Mark?
I think I have employees here taking the first, second, and the last week off. I think the third week's the best for this department.
Okay, that's good to know.
And I agree with Mark. That's probably a good target, not knowing everyone's schedule.
So the first week starts with July 1st and it's going to take us to the 4th of July. So that would be my mother's and father's 82nd anniversary. Imagine that.
Wow.
My mom's still around, but not my dad. So the following week is the week of the 4th of July. So are we talking about July 12th that week, Mark?
That looks pretty good, I think.
The week of July 12th?
What about Thursday, the 15th?
I like that.
I like that.
Yes.
Mr. Ferry, are you going to be doing any paving in July, especially that week? Or are you going to be doing it in June?
Nothing scheduled this time. We're holding off on that.
Okay. So how's the 15th?
Looks good.
Looks good. So Mrs. Gula, I had mentioned that it's probably going to be like 11:30 to 1:30. But what was the times in the past? I'm not sure if that's a good time.
Didn't we do like 8:00 to 10:30? It was kind of morning.
It was more, okay, that's, and you know, obviously, it's going to be 8:00 to 10:30 because there are going to be shifts. There's going to be people in different departments that not everybody can go at the same time. So I'm, I'm okay with 8:00 to 10:30 on the 15th. And could you let Karen Brady or Leigh Anne know whether or not you're going to be able to attend so that we can know how much food to, to order before the 15th? That would be appreciated. And if people are going on vacation, let us know beforehand, before they go on vacation, whether or not they're going to be available for the 15th. So we can have a pretty accurate count as to who's going to be attending. So you can, you can let the word out to your departments. Let them know that we're planning on this. I interrupted you, Mrs. Gula. You were going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, all department heads, please let Karen know from your, what your own department's going to do. That's the best way. And we figure if we get the word out now, if people haven't made vacation plans and they want to attend this, they might be able to work around it. And we will have, we will have malasada from Art's Bakery.
That's good. And somebody has suggested that we have mimosas, but we're not going to, just. Yeah, no Bloody Marys either. So if there's no further questions on that, I'm going to go and ask everybody to give a report on their department. And I'm going to go by what my screen shows as far as names. I don't know if your screen's the same as mine, but I'm going to start with Jocelyn, if you could. Just give us an update as to what's going on with your department.
Lori is working with the Parks and Rec Department to start pop-up libraries in July. So she's going to visit a different park every day. And she's, we're looking forward to that, actually, seeing people again. And she's created a little passport book so that kids can get a sticker. And then if they go to visit all the parks, they'll get a little prize, I think, from Parks and Rec. I'm scheduling a couple of New England Aquarium virtual programs as part of our digital grant, one of our digital grants that we received. And I'm working, trying to get one done so I can embrace one of the other grants that we just got. A grant from the American Library Association that we received. And we're trying to keep busy and active and positive, so.
Thank you. Mark Pacheco? Any update?
Ah, yes. So this past month, we audited our dog records. We compiled a list of all the vets who issue rabies to Dayton residents. And we've been working with a, contact with the state rabies program. I guess there's a mass law that says vets also have to send a copy of the rabies to the clerks department as well. So we've been working with her to reach out to vets to let them know of that requirement. So only eight of the 44 vets that routinely administer rabies vaccines to dogs and Titans actually send them to Town Hall. So we're looking to get that number up and get a true count of dogs indicted. So if you're in town and you're listening and you haven't licensed your dog, give the clerk's office a call. We'd love to help you with that. I've met with some dog licensing software companies. I'm thinking about, we do it all by hand now. It'd be nice to have something, you know, the animal control officer and the police and other, as needed, people can concede in real time whose dogs are licensed and all that. So that's something in the works. I've had vets from the Northeast Document Conservation Center in this month to look at our vital records dating back to the 1700s. To my knowledge, some of them are the only copies in town. So I've been looking to have them, you know, digital copies and preserved. Some things look like it's great historical significance, like being bought, even the buying of the land. So looking into that. Uh, let's see. I guess that's good for now. We're still working on represync. I guess that's good for now. We're still working on three precincts. We may go to three precincts and that's gone out to the apartment heads in town. And I want to thank Pam and Becky after the apartment, they've been working really hard. And we're really happy to have them.
Thank you. Carrie, do you have anything to give us, an update on the zoning board or the planning board?
Oh, always. So. Tonight we have a public hearing for, thank you. Forgive me for one second. Okay, so we have a public hearing tonight for the continued zoning bylaw amendment for the marijuana cultivator definition. Which is just to incorporate the delivery, but not to consumers. The kennel residential definition has been stricken at this time because it looks like we're going to do some more work on that. We also have a public hearing tonight for a two-lot subdivision, which is more of an administrative formality for a four-man lot, which. Can't be done as a four-man because it's got to be done as a subdivision. So again, it's administrative. And then we do have Forest Hills that is, has a continued date to June. June 16th, however, it looks like upon the recommendation. Of our council, we are going to have that continued again because of the COVID remote participation restriction. Because it was continued as a. As a. Sorry, remote. But because it's going to be lifted and it's supposed to be physical, the question is, is it going to be a valid public hearing? So it throws, of course, the whole public hearing into a loophole. So basically just to be safe. We're going to continue it again. And when we continue it, it is our hope, we're going to have a sufficient location. For the next public hearing. July is probably the next thing or the next date. So that's about it for planning. Zoning, they did make a, and forgive me, Selectmen and Administrator Mullin, you will be getting a memo. They did make the recommendation for the. Appointment of Ms. Pritchard for an additional member. So that memo will be coming. So we have another member, we just need another one. Anyone out there who knows someone who wants to be on the ZBA, please, 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 I need someone. You know, zoning has been pretty quiet, so I hear Bristol Aggie is going to be submitting a special permit for an illuminated sign for a variance. Um, and I think that's it. It's been pretty quiet. So that's about all I got.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to elaborate, if I may, a little bit on the cannabis language. This morning, I was, I was watching New England Cable News, it came across the ticket that the Cannabis Control Commission. Has put all the legislation together and tweaked the delivery aspect of cannabis. What happened was is that when the law was written. Originally, it left it open for all individuals who had a cannabis license issued by the state to make deliveries. So in turn, what the CCC did was that, because I give an example of 620 Spring Street, where they specifically want to cultivate in manufacturer. This does not give them the capabilities to sell to the general public. That's why there was a change in the wording of the law. I hope that makes sense to everyone. That's out there. Mike, I wanted, I just came through this morning, I saw it on New England Cable News. And as, as far as the planning board, we are ready for town meeting. We are going to complete, as Mrs. Easter Day said, just recently. Our public hearing on the cannabis. We're trying to reschedule our public hearing for Forest Hills and we've been in communication with our legal on that matter. And also conferring with the town administrator on this issue also. So I want to thank Mrs. Easter Day for all of her work that she's done leading up to us to be prepared for town meeting or Monday evening. And with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Town Administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. And again, thank you, Carrie.
Welcome.
Town Account, Chris, you have anything you want to update us on?
Yeah, so just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that the fiscal year end is approaching rather quickly. There is a standard memo I will be issuing all of you, reminding you of. Cut off for June 30th and when I'm going to need to see invoices and payrolls and whatnot. I hope to have that memo out today to all of you. You know, with specific dates in mind, especially where June 30th ends on a Wednesday right now. So it definitely has an impact on payroll at fiscal year end. I'll also be providing you or trying to provide all of you updated budget information. On fiscal 21 so that you can prepare for the possibility of either making a year-end transfer request. Or reserve fund transfer request to the finance committee. I apologize for being delinquent on these reports. I should be doing these monthly. Things got in the way in March and April, so I apologize, but I'll bring everybody up to date through the end of May as far as where their budgets stand. The last thing I want everybody to be aware of are any article accounts that are, that are more than a year old. And whether or not, you know, there's still a need to spend the money in these old articles and I'll provide. I'll provide you your article balances along with your operating budget balances within the same reports. And I would just simply ask that everyone consider. What their actual needs are based on this old article money. You know, if you're done, you should consider returning that money to the general fund. Sorry, I. I think that's all I have for everybody right now.
Thank you, Chris. Everybody should know that Chris is talking about, about being a little bit behind. He's only working one day a week for us, so we have to take that into consideration. But thank you, Chris, for still being with us.
Oh, hey, you're welcome. I wish I could still be here. More regularly for you folks. I miss you all already.
Thank you, Chris. Tom Barkin, do you have anything you want to contribute?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. I just want to mention, June, we start accepting, if anyone didn't know, the CPC starts, starts to accept the applications. For, you know, anyone that's interested or if they have ideas. To apply to the CPC and it'll go through the process with our members. And. That's, that's the main thing I have. I may not be at the town meeting depending on. There's a family issue in out of state in Colorado, I may not be there. But I do have a vice president. Mr. Eckerson, who is also our financial guy. And I, I think I'm sure Tim will be there. Who was my trainer, trained me for the position. So I'll let you know if I can't make it. It's an emergency that came up. It's a medical issue with a family member. My oldest son lives out there and. I've had quite a few medical things. My wife was sick, she's better. So then I got another issue. But I mean, I'm hopefully I can do it. I'd like to be there. It'd be my first meeting as the chairman. Of the CPC and I would hate to miss it. But if unfortunately, family comes first with me and it's nothing against the town or the people at town, I just. I may have to, you know, have to handle things like that. It comes up. So I think the boards, the board and the town administrator has always been understanding of that in the past, so. We'll see how it shakes out, but I'm sure everything's pretty much lined up, I believe. The major thing that we're going to talk about as far as the CPC is the historical. Commission and. They will be in attendance and probably want to speak on it. It's basically that one thing and then the routine budget items. That get approved every year. It's pretty much standard. And we've been working with the town accountant. And everything's in order and. I'm sure if there's any questions, they can be answered. And I don't know if I could do a remote or not. If they needed to talk to me or had a question, so. I'll be able to have a better idea. I'll, I'll stay in touch with the town administrator. And update them if there's an issue. I don't think it's a problem. That's why we have a vice president. And he just happens to also be the financial guy, so he's up to speed on all the finances. As you well know, we don't handle any money. We don't handle any cash. Everything is done. Through the state and the town accountant, so it's all in order. And, you know, we're working on getting all the records into the town hall. In one place and we have everything on a zip drive that's being. Handled over to our. People, so that'll all be in order. So I mean, if there's any questions, I'm sure it can be cleared up. And once again, Tim Reins. Is, was the one to basically train me for the job. And I think he'll be there in other, probably other capacities, but I'm sure Mr. Eckerson can answer any questions. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Tom.
Moving forward. You know, moving forward and we ask people to, you know, get involved with us and. You know, we can try to answer your questions and if we don't know the answers, we'll get them from the state and. We want to help the people of the town. It's the people's money. They contribute all this funding. And basically, we're just, you know, we put it, it all, everything goes to town meeting for a vote, so. It's about the people of the town and whoever we can help out, if we can help out people, that's what we're there for. Well, if we can help, you know, the town, obviously, if it fits the criteria, we'll try to help. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Tom, and we hope everything works out for your son. And I agree 100% that family comes first. Thank you, Tom.
I have a comment, if I may, just a very brief comment.
Yes, Mr. Reins.
Yes, this, this is for our new. Person who took over Sumideris, Mike Pacheco. I had petitioned and asked Sumideris many years ago, there are funds available through CPC. In order to utilize, to take care of all your historical records and preserve them. So in the future, look into that aspect of using those funds. They're available, they're out there. There are plenty of preservationists who do this type of work. And that's just something to let you know that I know you're in the process of doing this now, so it may be also a help in the future.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Mrs. Golat?
I'll have an update at the end when we finish with everybody, but I just wanted to mention. I asked Todd Pilling to attend this meeting because just before I signed on. When you get to Todd, we had a meeting with the engineer for Dora Estates, which is the. Project that we went to meet with the town concom about last month. So anyhow, that's why Todd is here. I would ask also, Mr. Chairman, that he be added to the list of invitees for our department head meeting because. There's a lot going on with Stormwater and in addition. There's nobody here that I can see from the Board of Health, so I thought that's a department we should include. So just a suggestion that we add him to the email list.
You're talking about adding Todd to the list?
Just so he gets the list. So if he's got, if I need him for something or Board of Health stuff, he'll be able to present whatever they're working on.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Lisa, do you have anything, any updates for your department, conservation?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so the Conservation Commission is in receipt of a notice of intent from Forest Hills for the definitive subdivision. We haven't opened that hearing yet. We plan to do that at our next meeting, which is Thursday, June 17. At that meeting, we will also be reopening Strawberry Fields. At our last meeting, we told them that they needed to refile due to the fact that, and I have recused myself from that project. However. Do the peer review consultant notified Strawberry Fields that they did not. Did not submit a correct a butter notification to a butters. The notification simply said that they were proposing a driveway. It didn't say anything about development or the resources, so. The commission has asked them to refile, so they did refile. Just a couple of days after the meeting, so we'll be opening that new meeting as well at our June 17th meeting. And we also have a continuance of Hunter's Hill subdivision. Where we are still waiting for the redelineation. Of that site. And at the same time, the commission and I are working with several landowners who have. Done a few things they shouldn't have and are moving forward to correct them. So we're working with them on that. And then we have some who have done things and they're waiting to. For their surveyors and engineers to draft some restoration plans. But we're, we're making good progress. We're moving forward and I feel good about the work we're doing.
Thank you, Lisa. Just for clarification, we have two strawberry fields. Is this the one that's on Somerset Avenue or is this William Street?
Yes, Somerset Ave.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Todd, do you have any update from the Board of Health?
And obviously COVID coming to an end is a wonderful thing and that's put a severe strain on the office for the last, I don't know, whatever, number of months here.
15 months?
Yeah, the last, since Thanksgiving's been even worse, but it's nice to base, pretty much be behind us with this. Still, we got breakthrough cases going on, so you still need to be cautious when you're out there. Because even though you've been vaccinated, the vaccine's only like 90% effective, so you still need to be cautious when you're out there. Yes, we did meet with the engineer for Dora Estates. For those of you who don't know, the subdivision is in Totten, but it's on the East Dayton Line, right up against the Dayton Water District. And their engineer has made, well, he just dropped off the changes. He made all the changes that were requested and so it appears we're going in the right direction, so.
That's great. Thank you, Todd.
bulky item pickup week, next week, so. Saw a lot of tags for that, but other than that, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Tom Ferry? Want to give us an update if you can, please?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, quite a few things here, loose ends. Couple of months ago, I went to Slutman for. An override for the expense to repair the guardrail at center and middle. I'm still waiting. That has not been done yet. It could be the economy with the material supplies. I don't know. He hasn't answered two voicemails. I just sent kind of a nasty email in carbon, sausage on this because it could become a contractual problem. But we do have safety concerns at that intersection and I intend to pursue in that. We may even have to go to a second veteranist. Brook Street scenario for the Brook Street Solar. For those that didn't know and probably don't know the standing outcome, they ran it to trying to set the footings for the covert. The water main ended up being a conflict, being a plastic main. It's not something that can be identified, the exact location. It was dig safe prior, all the drawings and whatnot. But it was a conflict, so that is scheduled to be relocated. The main is going to get relocated this Friday. As far as Brick Street. According to the contractor, there is an invoice that went to our engineer for 150 grand. I haven't heard anything from that. I do got a voicemail waiting for return on that. That's critical because we got a timeline for that 150 grand. And Karen and Mike are in the loop on that one, if not the I know.
Thanks, Tom.
The whole town has been swept, all the basins have been cleaned, we're in the process of mowing the side of the roads. And we're also doing the fencing for the park and rec at this time. We were also asked to cover. For at least a month, the transfer station, so we'll figure that out shortly. Another small dilemma that I believe there's next Selectmen's meeting, they might be entertained to hear a girl scout troop. About the trees that were being planted. The trees arrived and announced, so they, we didn't get the vote on that officially, but we did plant the trees Sunday. The trees did not look good. I have a feeling they were lost in the mail.
The trees did not look good. I have a feeling they were lost in the mail. But the location will be the best place for the condition of the trees. And you'll hear more about it when they're ready to go to your agenda, but they're safely at the Brad Cove West entrance for the consideration. If you need the girls to move them, I'm sure they will be glad to, but that's the best place for them right now. I think that's it at this time. Exposed. I don't see the two chiefs on. The generator is still down at William Street Water Tank. We do have a six-year warranty on that. Briggs and Stratton was on the site yesterday. We were just waiting for how they want to handle that. We might have to replace a full replacement on that generator. I don't know. That's part of our redundancy for all our radios in town. I'll have more information internally shortly, hopefully.
Thank you, Tom. Stacy, want to give us an update, please?
Yeah, not that I'm going to say that I'm not busy, but a lot of my busyness now is wildlife. Moms are out teaching their while, they're young to hunt, so people are seeing them out during the day and concerned. We did have a rescue of two silver fox kits that unfortunately had passed away, have passed away due to poisoning. And I do have one cat at the shelter. I got rid of the, not got rid of, I adopted the other two out the other last week. So we're pretty pretty good right now.
Thank you, Stacy. Jonathan, want to give us an update on Commission on Disability?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. We have at this point not heard yet on our request for the variance for the rampant Old Town Hall. I know that the Architectural Access Board has had to postpone a couple of meetings for reviews. So I'm actually going to follow that up this afternoon. Hopefully we'll hear in the very near future. We are working with the scouting program in town as well with regard to the community garden and we'll be doing some grant work with them during this month to get some resources for accessible surfacing as well as some raised beds that they want to create. And we thank them for thinking so much about accessibility and wanting to make it fully accessible to the town's residents. There are other things that we're looking at and other projects we're looking at and as well. And we're going to begin to look at the, there's some of the things in the KMA report. That was the self audit assessment that was done last year to see some of the things that would be easier for us to begin to tackle at this point that would not involve significant expense and so forth. So we've got, you know, different things going on, different projects. We resubmitted with the support of town administrator and Mr. Ferry as well. Thank you very much. A potential grant for some sidewalks and crossings in town. Hopefully we'll hear on that, I'm assuming by the end of June. And then, you know, diligently work on that if it's, if it's accepted and sure Mr. Ferry will go to town on that right away. Other than that, there's just things keep on going slowly but surely and that's, that's all I have to say right now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gale. Mary Hathaway, do you have anything that you want to add? Give us an update on your department? Maybe Mary's not available. I'm not sure who's on the phone. Who, who is that on the phone?
That's me, Mr. Bichico.
Yes, how you doing?
How's everybody doing this morning here?
Pretty good, I think.
Yeah, a couple of things here at the police department. We just had a new patrolman start this past Sunday. Patrolman Stephen Hathaway. Steve now is working the eight to four shift. Glad to have him aboard. He was a reserve here at one time years ago. Then he moved on to another department and he wanted to come back to the town. So I'm glad he's back with us. For dispatcher 911, we are in the process of, we hired some part-time dispatches. Now we are in the process of doing a training for them, doing some classes online with them. So we're going to get them going so we can have them on our list for the department. And as far as the harbor master Marino, he's out in the water right now. And he started to hit the water because the summer has arrived here and I'm sure he'll be busy out there and he will be out there. So basically that's about it here at the police department.
Thank you, Chief. Mrs. Goulart, you said you wanted to speak again at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, Chris, you still here?
Yes, I'm still here.
Hey, if you can get some time off, we expect you to show up on the 15th of July.
I will, I will make my best effort to be here on July 15th.
Okay, and Mrs. Brady, would you get in touch with Mallory and invite her also?
Absolutely, I would do that.
Okay, thank you. So for the Board of Assessors, we have two pilot agreements that in my opinion are in their final form. They've been sent to the company for the Brook Street Solar and also for phase one on Elm Street. That's the one next to Mr. Ka's property, the one closest to Elm Street. We're just waiting to hear back. As far as we're concerned, they're ready to go to a vote at town meeting. We have a Stormwater Committee voted to give an a six-month extension to the solar farms on Tremont and Middle Street. I'm not sure what the delay is there, but they requested it. And we did give them an extension. I checked with Carol this morning and whether or not they're up and running, July 1st, they're going to hit the tax rolls. We expect to have pilot agreements for phase two on Elm Street, which is a big solar farm behind the first one. Again, right near Mr. Ka's house, further out on Hunter's Hill. We expect to have two pilot agreements for Arujo Farms. And the reason we say two is because there are two property owners involved. So when there are two property owners, we issue two pilot agreements, even though the property is a butt. That's what we did on Tremont and Middle Street. I just want to mention, as Mr. Pilling said, there was a, Dayton was well represented at the Tonkin Conservation Commission back in May because the concern was the effect on the Dayton Water District wells and the fact that procedures hadn't been followed and a butters had not been notified. So anyhow, I want to thank Todd, Jim Agia, Jim Digits, Lisa, Lenny Hull and Tim Reins. I hope I haven't forgotten anybody, but as I said, Dayton was well represented. And we will be going back to the Tonkin Conservation Commission, June 14th at 6:00 PM. The meeting this morning with Mr. Tolman, the engineer and Mr. Pilling went well. And so I think we'll get all of the issues that we raised relative to concern about our wells and the potential pollution of the Segreganset River, which as we all know is a public water supply for both Somerset and Dayton. So that's everything I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart. I see that, Carrie, you have a question? Did I see that you have a question?
Tim wanted to ask.
Yeah, this is a question. Did you and Todd talk directly to the city engineer or the engineer directly for the development of Dora Estates?
Dora Estates.
Okay, because there was a communication I received directly from the Conservation Commission's first meeting in Tonkin that the city engineer even had concerns about that project going forward. That was done in the first meeting that they had up there. So I believe Mrs. Caledonia may have forwarded you that, those minutes of that meeting, Mrs. Goulart?
Yes, yes. And so the fact that Mr. Pilling and I, Mr. Tolman, the engineer, reached out to Mr. Pilling and Mr. Pilling asked me to attend because it's always better to have somebody else there listening, if you know what I mean. So anyhow, this is just, it was a brief overview of Mr. Tolman's responses to that three-page letter with all the attachments that Mr. Pilling wrote on behalf of the town of Dayton. So all of those other issues that have been mentioned, plus anything DEP has done, that stuff is still up in the air. I hope by the time we go to that meeting in June, those things will be also resolved. But today was strictly to give Mr. Tolman an opportunity to respond to that letter. And he did leave sets of plans that Mr. Pilling will review. So that I think we have a meeting June 7th with Mr. Clunen and Mr. Mullin, is that correct? Excuse me, we'll be discussing whatever information we have at that time. But certainly, I would ask anybody that attended the meeting in May to, if you're available, come to the meeting on June the 14th. I like the fact that Dayton had a very good turnout and even though everybody didn't speak, when we got up and left the room, it was obvious how many people were there from Dayton by looking at the empty chairs. So I think considering the number of departments that were represented, they know we're serious about concerns about that river and about the project. We're not trying to stop the project. By the same token, we're trying to protect Dayton's interests. And at least we got them to continue. So we, we're going to, we're going to continue to pursue it until we get the answers we need and protect the town of Dayton and the water district rights.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart. Mary Hathaway, are you available now?
I am.
Could you give us an update, please?
Working on my year-end balances. I've been getting in touch with anybody with past due real estate bills to try to get as much money in as I can before I have to put liens on their properties. This month I'll be getting the real estate file to get my bills printed for FY '22. And just cleaning up files in my receivables to get my balances done.
Thank you, Mary. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I failed to give an update on Main Street sidewalks. Plymouth areas, drawings were done on the drainage and sidewalks. I think the next step would be to communicate with National Grid on conflicts we have with all their poles. So that project is moving forward. We're not going to be sent in a sidewalk this year, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So this, this is an important step to move along. I'm only sharing this because I'm not sure what other departments might have input. This is for the sidewalk running from Elm Street to William Street on the north side. I know, hopefully ahead of the water main that could be replaced in the near future also.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else? If not, I'll see you next month at the next department head meeting.
This is Mr. Gale. I just have a quick question for you, a comment and a question for Mr. Ferry. The first, the first comment is, and I know he's, he's not part of this, but just reminding everybody that Parks and Rec is having a, an event on July 10th at the playground and the, in center of town by town hall. And I know that if there are committees or commissions or town departments who would like to have a table there or anything to share with residents of the town, he's going to have some music and they're going to have food and a number of other things as well. I would recommend that if you have committees or commissions, as I said, or anything else that you know of in town, who's a nonprofit, it's a good opportunity to reach out to Kevin Smith Jr. as the chair of Parks and Rec and let him know you'd like to have a table or an event there. He'd be happy to, to talk to you about that. So I'm just sharing that because the Commission on Disability is going to have an activity going on that day as well, so that we can share different things about disability with the town's residents and people who show up that day. And some activities they can participate in. The other question I have, Mr. Ferry, for you is potentially if, if we as the Commission on Disability and Parks and Rec, we're thinking of having a joint public meeting, for example, to discuss the parks in town and disability, you know, assessment and awareness and what we might do for the future for an accessible park. Are we able to use something, for example, like the Lions Pavilion? Is that allowed for, for, for a public meeting like this? Because it's outdoors and it's accessible? I'm just curious what, if there's a protocol for that.
Yes, Pavilion is, was designed and donated to the community for the community to be used by anyone in the community. It just needs to be scheduled. At this time, it goes, the scheduling goes through Kyle Stoltenstrom and his information's posted on the, on the front of the Pavilion. I believe they may be somewhere in the town website. I haven't checked recently, but there should be some contact information there also.
All right, great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, that's it. Thank everybody for participating and we'll see you at the brunch in July as well as our next department head meeting. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.